Ready? Everybody ready? Ready? Here we go. I'd like to call this meeting in the regular Board of Trustees to order. It is Tuesday, October 2nd. Let the record show that we began this meeting promptly at 7:00. Becky is the clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Trustee head?
President.
President Klein?
Yeah.
Trustee O'Brien-Berglin?
Here.
Ortner? Absent. Stanifer?
Here.
Wecken?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. We have minutes in front of us from the September 4th Board meeting, and as I was not in attendance, I will recuse myself from voting on this or even making the motion. But I would like to thank the clerk for such thorough minutes so that I could know what had transpired.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, September 4th, 2012.
Second.
The only change that I would have is that I did not adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
I just noticed that, Becky. Who did adjourn the meeting?
I believe Mr. Zappa.
Is that you, Mark? Let the record show that Mr. Zappa adjourned the meeting. All in favor of the motion to accept the modified minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We also had a special board meeting on September 27th. That meeting, those minutes are also in your packet. Entertain a motion for those minutes?
I'll move, George.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Stan. All in favor of accepting those meeting minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Item number three on the agenda, comments from the floor as an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities not on today's agenda. I see some folks out there, but they will be talking to us later in the meeting as they are on the agenda. Item number four is amended Class B, Class B liquor license for extended premises for Cozy Corner for October 14th. Scott, would you introduce yourself and tell us what it's about?
My name is Ryan.
Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry.
They call him Scott Junior.
I know.
Surprise.
Well, if you didn't look so much like your father.
It's true. It's true. Is that a short joke now?
Is what?
It might be.
Yes, Scott Junior.
Yes. That's a skinny joke now, so I'll take it as a compliment.
I'm not touching that one. You guys eat too much of your own food, you know what I mean?
That's true. So... We're just asking for next Sunday.
14th.
Two weeks.
Sunday, two Sundays from now.
Oh, yeah.
14th.
Yes, Sundays. We're having a surprise birthday party for my father.
Which is why I inadvertently...
Yes. He tried to trick me, see if he knew. He's asking for the permission himself.
Yeah.
So... And we're just asking for permission outside to have half of the parking lot in between us and Freedom fenced off, just for a little extra room for people to come out and they can go outside and drink and just to spread out the people a little, I guess. Give us more room. Our small building. Roughly, it's just a party for family and ex-employees, which there should be hundreds of them. So, I'm sure all enjoyed every minute of my dad's, so I'll show up and love him. I don't know what I'm mumbling about anymore, but...
Mark, do you want to say something?
Well, we have to read this whole thing, right?
Yeah.
No? Good. I'll move approval.
Of what?
Of the suggested motion in my book.
With the conditions as shown.
With the conditions as shown.
I'll second it.
Hearing none. All in favor of granting this extended permit indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Appreciate it, so...
I saw what you made last time, but I appreciate it.
Item number four.
Good luck.
Done. Item number five. I was looking for Sandy's, not here. Nor does she need to be. Item number five is amended Class B, Class B liquor license for extended premise for the Malloo Inn Fall Motorcycle Run on October 13th. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move, George, with any conditions attached.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Stan. Any questions or comments regarding this? This is the twice annual event and has a good track record, so good. Any comments? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item number six, permission for River Valley Deer Management to hunt in undeveloped park. And I see Mr. Fay is here. Lon?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Okay. My name's Lon Fay. I'm from River Valley Deer Management. We are your agent of deer reduction and control in the village. As such, it's been, the program has worked very well. We've had zero complaints. It's worked very well. However, there are some pockets now where the deer have learned to hide and tend to congregate. One of those is the park that you have in front of you, and those deer, in, there's the worst spot of all for car deer collisions is right outside of Bardell Dennis' office going across to the west side of 35. There's, there are always deer hit there, you know, throughout the year. There's at least one or two a week. That's the deer population that we would like to try to get at and to reduce. As such, the best place that we've been able to see is the undeveloped forest area there. It's a small, little woodlot. It's designated by definition as a park by the city because all unimproved green spaces in the village, I'm sorry, not the city, in the village are deemed parks. There are no swing sets, there are no play areas, there are no reasons for people to be there, you know, in terms of playing or whatnot. And that is the area that we would like to target if, with the board's permission, to try to reduce the number of deer that are, in fact, going across the Highway 35 and being Now, as such, if this works well, we would then like to see if there are other areas that might work, but specifically, all we're asking for is to be able to access that one area to reduce the deer numbers.
George, can I move approval, approval of letting the River Valley Deer Management access St. Kreis Station Park?
I would second that.
I have some problems with this. Lon, I'll tell you that without any doubt, I can't, I can't approve this from my own vote, and I'll tell you why. First of all, I have to ask you the question. Have you been to that site?
I have.
Have you walked it from the street down the path, that very narrow path? Have you walked down to the, into that area?
I have. That's not the area we would be. We would not be on that path, but we have, I have walked that.
How would you get the deer out of there?
There's a couple easy ways. Either, if we had permission to hunt the park, there are residents around the outside of the park that would allow us access in and out, and there are...
There are residents right around there who have many small children.
Mm-hmm.
Next to that, on the one side of that, to the right of that path, that's that narrow, very narrow piece that sticks out, there's a family with two small children. And then you have John and Mimi Fair's property, and then next to that, there's a house with four small children who play in those woods. I cannot condone having hunting in that very dense brush area because that's, I know where children play. And that piece of property is not, I mean, I'm supportive of this whole program, you know that, but I, I can't condone that piece. I have walked it with, Mark Ekblad and I walked that. And I think we, would you agree, Mark? The two of us came away from there and were going, "I can't see hunting down here."
And then they also were, we actually met them out there and they, they were not, they absolutely told George and I that they were not in favor of having any hunting in the property.
Right. And, and we totally respect that. That's why we're seeking permission and, and to discuss the situation. The, that property, that woods butts up to the north to Stars, Star Woods, okay?
It's a native village property.
I, I understand that, but the preferred access from us is to come up from the bottom there and hunt around that corner. We have permission to hunt on the veterinarian's land there, but that's not village property either, but that's the area that we have access through. So, that bottom there going up towards Mr. Johnson, the district, or the prosecutor's property, that's more the area in the, in the village property, but more on that bottom side. That, the deer are coming from the river, up through there, and then filtering out and, and across the highway. Now, if we need to stay away from the homes on the, what would be, you're, you're talking the south, southeast corner, fine. We're not talking about a blaze orange assault with guns blazing. We're talking about one or two guys stealthily in there, being able to access that population of deer as they, as they slip through, coming up from the bottom as opposed to coming in from, from the side. We, I'd never considered going in on that little spit of finger length. You couldn't do it. It, it wouldn't work. Well, it would work, but it would not be feasible.
Have the adjoining landowners been notified that you'll be back there hunting?
Well, we, we haven't notified them because we don't have permission to, to hunt there. I'm assuming that they were notified if they cared to, to, to be at the meeting to voice their, their displeasure to the motion that, that's out there.
We did not solicit any input from the residents.
Right. We can ask if, if, if that would be something that you needed us to do, to notify them and to, you know, get...
Not notify them, ask them.
No, to ask permission. My question would be, are we looking for a majority? Are we looking for a unanimous? Are we looking for, you know, what, what would be acceptable to the board? That's really what we're asking. Is there a way that's acceptable to allow us to access that population of deer? And it would be done, obviously, in a very, very safe manner. Now, I will state that the areas we hunt now, the, with the exception of Mark Zappa's land, is primarily backyards, in people's backyards. There are children around. We've seen things in the woods that you don't want to hear about, and they don't even know we're there. And we tend to keep it that way. And to date, we've had no altercations, no confrontations, and no problems. Our biggest fear is that it, a deer is shot and it ends up in a little child's backyard, you know, that, and to date in three years, that has not happened. We're very careful.
Lon, do you not have enough area where you can hunt?
Not that population, George. Okay, but this changes it. Then, then let us go instead over to the park above Ferry's Landing there. No one's there, there are no homeowners there. That would be acceptable, too. This is the preferred location. This is where the deer are. How many did you kick out of there when you guys walked through there? Any?
None. Didn't see any.
Okay. They're in there. I mean, did...
We walked around what we could before we said, "We got to get out of here." And it took me several days to get all of those things. Oh, yeah. I had to use a knife to scrape my pants.
But respectfully, George, that's part of the reason why it's good. It's, the deer have, have cover in there. It also keeps the, you know, children don't run through that stuff either. I mean, the, when you get, the further deeper into that you get in accessing from it, the less problems you have with people and, and children there. If it was a manicured park with trails all the way through it, it would be less conducive to the hunt because there, by definition, would then be more people there. Where there is access, there are more people encounters. An example of that is Berkmost Park in the city. We don't even go in there in the weekend because there's people all over the place. However, early in the morning during the week, we were able to go in there successfully. This is an area that, in general, is, is not frequented by people. Now, we could certainly stay away from those, those homes with small children. We could certainly talk to those folks and see if there's an amenable situation for them. But it, to be factual, if we need a unanimous acquiescence, it's not, it's not going to happen.
Well, I'm persuaded that this is a reasonable request, and if you've got a deer management program that's going on, but there are, shall we say, a refuge where they can congregate, where you can not get at them at compromise, this is the entire program because they can go there and hide. So, I'm persuaded that the last two years of experience you've had in the village, which has demonstrated, as you said, an incident-free, very successful reduction program, I'm prepared to support the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, and I don't, being a hunter, if you've got kids and a lot of activity around an area, the deer pretty much tend to go someplace else.
Right.
I mean, so if there's other people around there putting stuff down, and, you know, I mean, I'm sure all of these guys with the success rate they've had are very aware of the difference between the deer and young children or whatever. I mean, it is a concern of, you know, having them run, but no, I, I think we, if we, if we are having a deer management program, we need to be able to, you know, go where the deer are.
The other board members care to voice an opinion one way or the other?
If, if there was a accident that occurred, would we be liable for that?
We, we would be. Well, not necessarily. I mean, that's a question you can't answer until you have the facts in front of you for what happened and when it happened and how it happened and things like that, but there certainly is some risk to that, that we would get sued. We would certainly get sued if there was an accident. Whether we'd end up being liable at the end of the day, that, that depends on the facts. They do have quite a bit of insurance, and we are named insured on the insurance policy, which does cover us, so, and we have our own insurance as well. And we also, you know, villages do have some statutory protection where the limits that you get sued for are high, so there's certainly some risk you'll get sued, but that's not the best reason to make this decision. The best reason to make this decision is whether or not it's the policy of this village that that's a good idea. You guys have the authority to do this, you're the elected officials, and then talk through it. Is it a good idea or not?
Right. As an example, if we had permission for one of those homeowners, as long as we stayed within 100 feet away from the adjoining homeowner, we don't need to notify them or ask their permission or do anything. Now, that's not the way we operate because that's, doesn't, it's not effective. We need allies, not enemies, so we tend to go overboard as, as we did when, when we're recovering them by Colleen's home. The difference is, it's going to enable us to access that bigger chunk of woods. If you thought of that as a bigger yard, that's what, what we're, we're going after. And right now, we're precluded, we're precluded from doing so.
I, I'm not in favor of this since when we first thought of this, we had put a lot of thought into doing it, and we had agreed that we would stay out of the parks, and I would like to stick by that.
Is there compromise to be had? Would you still have to stay 100 feet off of the adjoining properties here if you're in the park?
Yeah, we, yes, we would. Absolutely, we would.
That's what she was referring to.
We would. That would still apply, wouldn't it, Mark? The, I mean, we'd still have to be X amount of feet away from a person's residence without their permission. That's, that's the way that it is.
That's what I was going to clarify. It's the residents, not the property.
Right. It's not their property line, it's their home.
Anybody else have any additional comments? Because of the nature of this decision...
Did we get a motion to adjourn a second?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I would ask, like to ask for a roll call vote, and I'll start with Dan.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Item number seven on the board begins with new business from the board or staff and starts with a comment from the president of the village, so that'd be me. And I'm, we have, as you probably know, if you've been reading the Hudson Star Observer or following us here at these meetings, we have recently contacted, I'm sorry, I'm trying to overhear what's going on as well as finish this. We have gone to Moody's Investor Service. They've reviewed and assigned a rating of A1 to the village of North Hudson, and I think that's quite a testimony to the staff and to this board and its predecessor, preceding board, on the diligence that we have done here in the village with our finances. An A1 rating is as high a rating as a village this size can have. We actually, the last time we did this, asked, "Couldn't we get a higher rating?" And they said, "No, because of the size of your, size of your municipality." So, my hat is off especially to the staff that has been able to maintain our books the way they have. That's all I have for right now. Will be more later. Gloria, do you have anything for administrator? Becky, I think that you have something that you would like to say, from the clerk's point of view.
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. Distracted for a moment there. The presidential election will be taking place on Tuesday, November 6th, and that is also a board meeting, regular board meeting night, so we are proposing to move that meeting to Thursday, November 6th, or excuse me, November 8th. I would ask the board to consider that change.
I'll make the motion that the November board meeting be on Thursday, November 8th, with the finance committee meeting at 6:00. We don't need a 4:00, do we? On that one, Gloria?
It depends on...
Let's tent, let's tentatively set the meeting time for the finance committee at 5:00. Okay? And the regular board meeting at 8, at 7:00 on November 8th. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the date and time for the meetings? All in favor of moving the meeting to November 8th indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I notice, item number eight, I noticed that the planned commission, I'm guessing, did not meet. Dan, would that be correct?
That is correct.
So, we move out of that into the personnel, personnel and finance committee. The first item is the claims, and I would ask for a motion so that we can pay our bills.
George, I'll move to approve the September 2012 non-recurring claims totaling $79,154.52.
Second.
Thank you. Any question about these bills? This is a spending, so I will ask for a roll call vote. Start with you this time, Ted.
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is the fire contract renewal. And Colleen, I'll ask you if you have anything that you would like to say or talk about this contract, and then if you will, you, I'll ask you if you want to make a motion.
Well, the, there was an increase in what the village owes in that, I meant to bring the paper, let me from Miranda, but that's basically because we didn't pay enough. Yes. And it's, it's averaging out what we owe, so it's, our portion has gone up a bit, but that's kind of equalizing or averaging what we should have paid last year.
Do you want to add something, Gloria?
Sure. Through the budgeting process and watching the numbers, we had actually had over budgeted last year because we didn't receive the information about what the, the numbers were. So, we had 90, about 90,000 budgeted for last year, and we're going to come in at about 80, or 70, oh.
Is this the number? Is this the number you want?
No, that was last, or that's for this year. Last year's number, or this year's number, would be $80,070. And then from there, that is including a $2,900 credit that they under, or that they credited back to us, and then projected for next year is the document that you see with Exhibit A. That column shows $85,907, which is the, the budget for 2013.
Okay.
So, I move to approve the fire protection contract and budget as shown in Exhibit A.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or any questions? Because this is a contract, we'll do a roll call vote, and I'll start with Dan this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We got them all in. We're up to four.
Heard about nine yeses so far, so...
Yes.
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 Okay. Did you want to do C?
C.
We didn't do, okay. We're going to table item C till next time. Darrell, I'm going to ask you to talk about item D, which is the library funding options.
The village did not request exemption from the county library levy this year, and so the village will not have funding in the village budget. Instead, the library support will be in the county library levy and will be on the county portion of the property tax bills for 2013.
The board has been wrestling with some of these numbers for quite some time. Just so that the public is aware, if there are any board members who aren't aware of this, our levy, our support for the library has been, well, would have been this for next year and has been this year, $81,362. That money will be coming off of your local tax bill, or our budget, rather, and the county will be paying the, will be picking up the entire share, which will be, Darrell, I want to get this number right.
Approximately.
And that will be reflected on the line in your tax statement from the county. We'll leave it at that unless anybody on the board has a question, we could go forward. Dan?
A question for Darrell. Do we know what any of the other municipalities are doing?
Yes, we, at county board this morning, we approved the exemption requests from all the municipalities in the county that have libraries. They all requested exemption, and they all met the exemption requirements. We did not receive a request to be exempted from the county library levy from the city of Hudson or the other three parties to the Hudson area joint library, so all of them will be in the county pool next year.
Were we to have an exemption, that means reach, reach 100% of the obligation as set forth in county documentation, state formula, we would have had to pony up another $62,445. I don't think that's right. I think it's 43.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand dollars, which quite frankly, we can't afford. We don't have another $42,000 to meet that. So, the county will be taking over. That's your question?
Yes.
Anybody else? There is no motion necessary on that one.
Yeah, good question, George.
Go ahead, Mark. I've been asked to apply for a job there numerous times, but, so maybe they are.
Yeah, they're Monday.
Agreed, it is. Gloria, do you want to talk about the budget? I don't think there's anything to approve at this time.
Yeah, there really isn't, but if you do not have a budget, a revised or new budget dated for October 2nd in front of you, talk to me at the end of the meeting, and I'll make sure you get one.
The finance committee did meet starting at 4:05 this afternoon, and we will continue to meet, meeting again October 16th. And we will continue to meet, meeting again October 16th. And again the week after that. We ain't doing nothing about that. All right, Public Works, I think you have a couple of things that you want to bring before us. So Darrell, I think the floor is yours.
Couple of action items, and the only thing I would mention under update, which would segue into the agenda, item B, is that Public Works has discussed and also then did discuss at finance meeting today, the possibility of moving forward with the shopyard project in 2013. This would be a replacement project of some sewer and water and completing a looping of some of the water. It's a project that may be done in 2013 or may be pushed off. But at any rate, we want to move ahead with some work by Cedar Corporation to get some engineering completed so we are prepared for that project. And we do have a proposal from Cedar Corporation to do that. So, Mr. President, with your permission, I would move to amend the 2012 Village of North Hudson's 210 Sewer Surcharge Replacement Fund and the 220 Water Replacement Fund by $3,250 each. That's a total of $6,500, if you're doing the fast math. And the 415 Capital Fund projects by $6,500, which is the offset, to cover engineering fees for the 2013 shopyards project. Additionally, authorize the village administrator to sign the engineering agreement with Cedar Corporation.
Second.
I just want to reiterate and make it very clear. This $6,500 is not coming out of our operating budget. It's coming out of these two funds, just in case that was not clear. Just want to make sure the public knows that. And by this motion, the only thing that we are about to approve or disapprove is the engineering fee. This does not mandate that we enter into the reconstruction of those, the sewer and water in the shopyards. That is a totally different topic. In fact, during finance, what we talked about was I asked if there was any sunset on the engineering. And the answer was, there is none. It could... The engineering will be done. It'll be put on the shelf until such time, hopefully in the near future, when we'll be able to complete the project. Correct, Kevin?
Yep.
Anything you want to say before the board votes on this?
Well, basically, the $6,500 is just for the topo. You know, the goal is to try to get that...
Topo, as in topological. Work, David. It's jargon, you know.
So basically, you want to get that in before the snow flies.
Thanks, Ted. Any board members have any questions? Okay. Where are they? I don't know. All right, involves spending, so we'll do a little roll call here. What do you say?
Yes.
And I'll say yes.
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 Second item is that we have another hydrant with a sinkhole problem. This was tentatively approved in Public Works. We didn't have a cost figure at that time, but we now have that. And we did review this in finance and are recommending to the board. So this is a sinkhole around the hydrant at 230 Monroe Street. And, Mr. President, I move to have Zappa Brothers repair the sinkhole at a cost not to exceed $485.
Second.
And any questions regarding the sinkhole? Mark, do you want to talk about that? You talked about it at finance, and I think I understand it a lot better.
Basically, the cause of the sinkhole is basically the hydrant. Even when you're in a position where that hole is shut off, the main valve is basically up at the base of the hydrant, for some reason, is not sealing. I have it set up with a fire in the water part there, so the entrance of the hydrant out. Check everything out and place the pipe, but we insert the water pipe there.
Very good. Thank you. Board members have any questions?
Mark, do you know where that sinkhole is?
No, my brother does, though.
It's by the shaft there.
It's actually right in front of... Yeah, in front of BOH. The only fire hydrant in front of BOH. Big yellow post by it. Can't miss it. In fact, funny I should say that, right? Somebody did not miss it. That's why the big yellow post. We'll start with you this time, Ted.
Yes.
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 Public safety.
Mr. Zappa, you want to...
Happy to report we have no sinkhole stories. We met with no real action. And it's reflect what we did. We did make some progress. We didn't do an emergency management director's position field. We're waiting to get some details squared away with an individual, but it sounds like it might work out pretty well for us.
Will this be something that the board will be voting on as far as dollars and cents?
Oh, we thought we'd take it upon ourselves just to do it. I think Mark was volunteering to pay for half of it, so...
Was he really?
Don't you remember that part?
I don't.
Yes, of course it will be. We don't have anything concrete yet from the individual. Absolutely.
Will we get it sometime, maybe in December, for a December meeting?
Hopefully.
Okay.
We didn't put a lot of demands on the kid. Demand.
Demand.
We're just grateful he was interested. It sounds like it'll work out nice. He does it for other communities. It'll be a contractual basis, and I think it'll be relatively minimal cost.
And the gentleman that we're looking at comes in very high regard.
For most jails, yes.
I have a question to achieve. Who is our evidence tech?
We have... We have two. We have one, Brian Columbino is assigned to the countywide evidence collection team, and I'm also trained as an evidence tech.
I saw that in the report, and I... Another title.
Same page.
At...
Is that finance meeting going on?
Yeah, it really was. I think the public appreciates that we don't fight the way some communities do at their council meetings. Is that right, Terry?
Some do.
We don't.
Some do.
We're too tired.
Thank you, Mark. It's always a pleasure. Public welfare, I see you guys did have a meeting on September 10th. Public welfare, like, any comments?
I would like to report that public welfare did not meet in September, and that is all I care to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the park board meeting minutes. Yes.
They were two different entities.
Yeah, I know. But you do share the same tab in our books. You do share the same tab in our books.
That's a staffing thing, and I'm sure it's to save village money.
Budget issue. Budgeting issue.
Colleen, anything that you'd like to share with the park, regarding the park board?
Just let people know that the climber has been installed in Summer's Landing Park. And it sounds like kids have already been enjoying it there. An Eagle Scout project was completed by Eric Iverson, repairing and painting some benches in Chief Jansen Park and Ferry Landing Park. So we appreciate the work that the scouts are willing to do with us to help parks. And other than that, Leboz will be presenting us with some sign possibilities for the "Welcome to North Hudson" signs from the Centennial Celebration proceeds. And when we get those, we will forward them onto the board.
How are we doing with the state? Are they... Is it state? Yeah. Because we can't do squat until we get approval from the state. All right.
That's all.
Okay. Item number 14 has to do with the board going into closed session. Does anyone like to read that motion?
George, you should read it.
Okay, all right. Move that we, as a board, go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.35E for the purpose of determining a negotiating and bargaining strategy for the possible purchase of real property and the investing of public funds. And also pursuant to 19.35G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body, who is rendering oral advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved with respect to 712 Pine Street North.
Second.
I think I heard Colleen first on that one. Might I propose that we move... Oh, roll call. What do you think, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Might I suggest that we adjourn to the conference room? And please bring your...